Just hold on there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any announcements? Does anybody have any announcement? You want to announce the potty next week? All right. Citizens forum. Okay, Mike, you're up.
Good evening. Michael Borrell, 143 West Street. I'm not completely prepared for this. I just actually got back from an event about two hours ago. But anyhow, I just happened to, when I go home, I just check the agenda and I see under Old Business, and I actually missed the last selectmen's meeting where we're talking about appointment at Town Council. So that's actually what I'm here to talk about tonight. I have some inside information relative to Town Council Patrick Costello. One of the things I wanted to share, and basically I'll say it upfront, is I am opposed to reappointing Costello, and I'm going to tell you why. A couple of months ago, I had asked Sean, the town manager, a few questions. And this was basically something I discovered on the internet. So I asked Sean, our town manager, why Lewis and Costello, Condon and Plaff was involved filing documents for a lawsuit for the town. The town is being sued. And Sean had replied to me that he had no idea that Patrick Costello had filed documents to court representing the town. So I had asked Sean, I said, "Okay." So I says, "You're not aware that Costello activated himself and could possibly be billing the town?" So I never brought Sean the documents, but these are the court documents at Worcester, actually a federal court, filed on 2/27/12. And right here, it says that the town hired Lewis and Costello, Condon and Plaff, and hired Regina Ryan, who's one of his associates. And also, there's a second attorney, which I didn't get a chance to print, because I only had 10 minutes to print this. So it turns out, the town is using two lawyers at Costello's law firm that's representing the town. So I was a little confused that I had expressed to Sean, saying, "Well, how can Costello get involved in a case that we never authorized him to?" And of course, obviously, whether he's billed the town currently or has not billed the town, the town will obviously be billed for this. So I will let the Board of Selectmen keep this. And there's the document right there that shows that he's representing somebody, and he was not activated by anybody from the town. So that's the first thing. The second thing was the Joshua Haga lawsuit, which has been closed out. Joshua Haga sued the town and was given a $10,197.3 settlement. And part of that, Costello was aware of that. And it took me a year and a half to get these documents from the town. And nobody from the town, not the finance department, not the town manager, Town Council was playing stupid with the town. And nobody would give me answers, because I had heard from a friend of Joshua Haga that he got a settlement. And it took me a year to get the documents to find out that the town had settled, and the insurance company had settled with Joshua Haga. And he was paid a settlement, and nobody from the town knew that information. And so the records request documents show that Costello was part of that information sharing. So either, A, he told people from the town, and people just didn't want to hear it and didn't tell anybody, or Costello knew that information and didn't tell anybody. So that would be a question that you should ask Costello, saying, "Well, you knew this information, but did you tell the town? And if you didn't, why did you not tell the town?" So obviously, and then the other thing is this. In the matters with the Burnett Mill, I did a records request to Sean. And Sean was very nice enough to get me several thousand pages of documents from the town for the Burnett Mill fire. So right here in my hand is a deposition from former Chief Peter Estraski that was in the box that Sean gave me, and Costello's documents were in front of this. And Costello had written a Post-it note that was attached to his documents that he had mailed the town manager back a couple of years ago. And on that Post-it note said, "Confidential information, not for public use." So anyhow, I was given the public records, because this matter was closed out. So Costello was involved. So this deposition of Peter Estraski for the Burnett Mill information, and how this connects altogether, is just in the telegram I had been here a month ago. And I wanted to create a Citizens Inquest Committee. This is the Telegram Gazette article. And I was checking into discrepancies in the town's documents of the Burnett Mill fire. And the largest discrepancy is this document I have in my hand that Costello mailed to the town. And because in his deposition under oath, there were questions and statements in here that I wanted to investigate. And one of them included a statement that involved these keys that Tracy was nice enough to photocopy for me. So it turns out that Costello was aware of certain information that town officials did not know. And in Estraski's deposition, he claims that when the Burnett Mill fire was going on, the town fire department had lost keys that went to the doors. And in the box of records that Sean gave me, that Tracy photocopied the keys in that photocopy machine, are the keys to all the doors to the Burnett Mill fire. So obviously, somebody is lying here. And obviously, Costello's fingerprints are all connected to this. So, and the other thing that I was bringing forward with my inquest committee was these crime scene photos that fire department officials took of a gas can, another one of a gas can, the gas can again, the gas can again. And these crime scene photos never went to the state Fire Marshal's office, never went to the FBI, never went to the ATF, never even went to Stephen Cohen, the state fire marshal. And Costello was involved in this as well. So that's my question, is how much information did Costello know about certain things that happened in town? It didn't tell anybody. So in my personal opinion, it would be political suicide to stay with his law firm. I would basically, so what I'm asking the Board of Selectmen is to table the appointment of Costello, or either discuss it, and I would certainly be willing to be part of anything, you know, any decision about Costello. Because I could give you records, public records from the town, that would prove that hiring Costello would be a terrible mistake. So, and then this document here, which I shared with Sean as well, which there's no explanation for, proves that when I did a records request to the state Fire Marshal's office, right here, from Stephen Rourke, General Counsel of the State Fire Marshal's Office, Department of Fire Services, wrote me a letter and his letter had with a signature saying that they never received the town's crime scene photos from the Burnett Mill fire in 2007. So going through that box of several thousand pages, Costello was certainly made aware of certain information. And obviously, Sean, being a new town manager, doesn't know any of that information. And that box was, Sean had gotten the box from the fire department, and apparently either from Deputy Kessel's office or now Fire Chief Kessel's office. But Estraski was in charge of that. And like I said, there's issues with his deposition, there's issues with the documents. I wanted to create that Citizens Inquest Committee to not only investigate what really happened with the Burnett Mill fire, because just me going through the state's records and the town records show that there could be an issue of alleged arson, and it had nothing to do with the welder. That the town speculated, and everybody speculated, so. So what disturbs me the most is there are several people, not only Costello, but there are several town officials, some that are here, some that aren't here. And another person's not here, I won't mention his name, he's not here either. But other additional people could be implicated in wrongdoing. And so what I was looking to do was get my committee going. And that was one of my things that was on my agenda, was to inquire some stuff to Town Council Costello. What he knew, when he knew it, and did he tell people? Because if he told people, there wouldn't be a cover-up. So I'll just end it there in saying, "You're making a big mistake if you keep him Costello." Because he's basically, I'm not going to sit here and slander him, but I would say, after the records I have, I wouldn't trust him, is basically what my... And I, and just so you can, you understand what I'm saying? I'm, who's a citizen, doing a records request, getting the town's records. And these records belong to the town. I'm not making this up. I have the records, and the records show that there's problems. And the problems are connected to Costello. So I would absolutely not appoint him. Because what he should be done is, he should be brought here and asked questions. Or somebody else should have some questions.
Well, we're under the gun to reappoint him. His deadline is this week, 60 days after the election.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Yeah.
Stand corrected.
But don't be concerned, because sometimes we've gone a year without reappointing. Town Council is Town Council.
I think if there's a reappointment, then I think that we really have to try to get to the bottom of this and have an executive session and sit down and see if he'll come out.
All three of those cases that Mr. Borrell mentioned, unfortunately, the town was not a party to those cases. In this, the first case that Mike mentioned, it's a lawsuit. I believe it's your lawsuit.
No. No, no, let me clarify. It's Tara McCrowan's lawsuit. I came to you and asked you, "If we lose that lawsuit and we have to pay that settlement of over $1 million", you told me, Sean, that it did not go through the insurance company, and that would come out of the town's budget.
No, it does go through the insurance company.
It does not, because you said, "We're not using Maya for that." So and I said to you, "The town's going to lose a million dollars." And you said, "Oh, well, she's suing."
I said, "I don't know," because the town isn't named in Tara McCrowan's lawsuit. It's the police officer specifically.
And the association which is connected to the town. And that's why Costello was connected, because I called somebody connected to the lawsuit who gave me more information than you know. And I told you that information. And you didn't do anything with that information.
Mike, you have to let Sean finish the sentence. He didn't interrupt you when you were talking.
Sorry.
And you can't interrupt him, please.
I'm not arguing with your perspective and what you believe. All I'm saying is that he has not been retained by the town for any of those matters. The town, he was not called by the Board of Selectmen or by the town manager's office. Currently, he's being retained by Maya, and we have no control. Regina Ryan is one of his associates. I know she's handling this federal case that he mentioned. But that's all I know. And Maya doesn't, we pay our deductible, and Maya handles it. So I know who the adjuster, who the investigator is at Cabot Risk, but he doesn't report to me. He reports to the insurance company. And that I have mentioned to you, Mike. Unfortunately, I don't, would I like to know? Sure. But apparently, I don't have to know, and there's not going to be any bills. We're not paying him, because Maya is paying him. That's why we have property and casualty insurance.
And it's not unusual for the insurance company to use Town Council or a company's council if they feel that they're competent to do the job and have the expertise to do it. That's not unusual. And photographs of gas cans are not evidence of anything, except there's a photograph of a gas can. On my property, you will find more than half a dozen cans very similar to that. Some have diesel fuel, some have gasoline, some have bad gas that I've drained from equipment because it's bad gas. Some are empty. So you can't make a jump from a photograph of a, what could be a gasoline container or a fuel container, and say, "This is evidence of arson." And I don't know that there's any requirement that if we have a photograph of a gas can on a, what, an 80-acre factory plant, that we have to send it to the Fire Marshal.
And I don't know if the Fire Marshal requested those, those crime scene photos. The state Fire Marshal's, state Fire Marshal's office did its own investigation of that fire.
Yes.
Clearly, that was a long time ago. But under none of those three cases, Mike, was Pat Costello retained by the town. The town did not hire him, the town did not pay him for any of those three representations you mentioned. None.
And the Police Association is not a town organization. The community gardens are now, but not the Police Association.
So what you're saying is, is just, obviously, Costello's involved. And it's in the document. I didn't print the right document. There's several documents with his name on it. And he says he represents the town of Oxbridge. I couldn't print that, because it took me, I had 10 minutes to prepare to come here, but... So if he said that, and that's what I brought to Sean, I don't remember, Sean, if I gave you those documents or not, but maybe I did.
Well, that's technically correct, because if the town is the subject of a lawsuit, then the town has to defend it. But we defer that to the insurance company.
But it turns out Maya is not involved in this lawsuit, because Maya does not handle union matters. I already asked them. Maya is not involved in this at all.
Well, then the... The union hired him. We have, again, we have nothing to do with it. The union hired him.
Well, that's what I asked you. I says, "Well, how did Costello get involved, and you didn't know?"
I said, "I didn't know. I don't know, because I don't have nothing to do with the union. The union doesn't tell me what it does."
But it doesn't make a difference. I asked you, I said, "Why is Costello involved in this?"
I said, "I didn't know. I don't know how." The only way he could be involved is if someone hired him, and I said, "I didn't hire him."
Well, that's what I, if you were the town manager, well, you are the town manager, and I asked you that question, you'd say, "Well, let me find out for you." Because I said, "Well, obviously, somebody's paying Costello, and you didn't even know he was part of it."
But is that not Sean's gain, to know that?
Well, I'm just trying to find, I'm just trying to find out, obviously, Costello's hired for this, and somebody's paying for it. And nobody can prove to me who's paying Costello to do this.
In the police matter, I guess it would be the union or the insurance company.
It turns out the union has hired a separate law firm for that, and Costello says he represents the town.
To defend them against the suit.
Correct.
But the town is also named, if I remember correctly.
So the town would hire, or the town, the insurance company?
Insurance company for the town, yes.
Would hire him, but I'm surprised that he... Go ahead.
From what I'm understanding is, the town doesn't pick and choose who gets hired to defend.
Not if it's an insured law. The insurance company does that.
And I can prove to you, we haven't paid him for any of these matters, because you can look over every single bill that we get. And it's not like he's going to defer it till the end. We get charged monthly for every minute that he works for us.
And I look at the bills every month, and I haven't seen anything.
There hasn't been.
But it is also normal for us to be copied on those things, because the town's involved.
Well, that's exactly my question. I'm the one going through the court records and giving them to the town, and to Sean. I'm the citizen. Why is it that, I know three times more information than the town manager does and the Board of Selectmen do. I know more business stuff about the town than the town does. That's basically backwards.
I don't need to know anything about it right now.
That's right.
There's nothing I can do about it at all. I don't need to know. There's nothing I can do. I'm not a party.
Right, right. No, I certainly understand that. But when the bill comes at the end, because all...
Not the bill at the end. There's no, they don't bill at the end. He bills hourly and monthly. That's how we get billed. There's no...
Right. But certain Maya incidents have deductibles that are $10,000 a whack. And I've gotten copies of all those. We spend, you know...
$1,000 deductible. That's what we get.
No, $10,000 deductible. Certain incidents have a flat rate $10,000 deductible. And I have tons of those, tons of those. And that is not part of Costello. That is not part of, I already gone through General with this, that is not even part of our premium that we pay. The yearly premium, this is on top of the yearly premium. And I said several times to the Board of Selectmen, "We're almost paying $1 million in premiums for general liability and property insurance through Maya." And every time we have those $10,000 deductibles, and they pay people $500,000, $800,000, $50,000 settlements, they jack up the price. And it turns out, it was Carrie Robertson was sitting right there and said, "Mr. General, why are we paying $35,000 now for this increase on the premium from Maya?" And General made a statement, standing right here where I am, and said, "Well, we have lots of lawsuits." And I've been to the Board of Selectmen for the past four years, trying to save the town money. And all that we do is, nothing happens, and everything keeps going up and up and up. And so instead of, you know, sitting up here and saying, "We've been sued 400 times in a year," or "300 times in a year," I say, "Well, why doesn't the town do anything to prevent it?" And that's the issue. There's no prevention. It's just a free-for-all.
It's hard to stop and sue. Anybody can sue.
Well, I understand that. Come on, yeah. And that's certainly fine, but nobody's, nobody...
I really don't want to cast any dispersions on Patrick Costello. And I would never do anything negative under this cloud. I don't think it's the right thing to do. I don't have any problems with looking into it. But I think that his appointment is tonight, and as far as I'm concerned, I'd like to see him appointed. But we, I'm not saying that we're not going to look into it.
I've been gone several weeks at a time. So I didn't even, I haven't even watched the last meeting, so I don't know what was even discussed, so.
I don't know. Joe, you want to weigh in?
No, I mean, I think you've covered it. I think if we can, you know, get some of the information, we should certainly follow up. I don't believe that, my opinion from what I've heard, that this is, this might be something we look at from the insurance perspective, if there's a premium concern. But I don't, I don't see this directly linked to the attorney from the Board of Selectmen or the town manager. So I, I'm a little concerned, too, that we're, to me, just as a bystander, it feels like we're on a witch hunt for something. And I just don't, I don't know why we're doing that. So I'm all about looking into anyone's concerns and following up. But let's make sure we check our facts before we point our fingers anywhere.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Jen? Peter? Lance? Do you have any comments?
Uh, no.
Well, no more comments, then I will entertain a motion at this time to reappoint Patrick Costello as Town Council.
Well, I wanted to, I have some discussion on that before we do that.
Okay, all right.
I think we should close, citizens.
Not a lot of discussion, just, I wanted to know if anyone had an opportunity... Actually, do we want to close the citizens forum and then discuss?
All right.
I just, okay, well, my question...
Well, close the citizens forum, and then we'll discuss this. All right?
Yeah, I'm just signing my information here, and I'll leave. Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
I mean, I think there are two components, in my opinion, for the reappointment. One is cost and one is quality. And Sean, thank you for sending out the invoice information for the last several years. It absolutely demonstrates that we have moved in the right direction as far as cost. I didn't know if anybody else had an opportunity to look at any of the invoice details. It doesn't look like that we've had any increase in, even the past five years that I've looked at, of case numbers, if you will, against the town. So it doesn't look like we've seen significant legal defense. The reductions, it looks like, are in general legal services, which appear to be that we're removing him from the non-value-added areas in the town, which to me makes sense. So I think we're managing the Town Council properly, and I believe that his costs are adequate. I just didn't know if anybody else on the board had an opportunity to look at any of the details.
I saw, I saw the same chart, and I thought it was pretty informative, as to how much we're paying.
But that didn't include the general legal expenses. It just had different cases.
Yeah, general legal services.
There is, there is a line item for that, Peter. It's, that's the biggest bucket that's kind of, without going into the details, I wasn't able to really figure that out. But I know the details are there and available.
But the legal costs are now one-tenth of what they were in 2007. So I think that's a definite positive, that we only spent $14,000 in 2013 versus $140,000 in 2007. So things are going in the right direction.
My, my... Go ahead, Sean.
I'm sorry, Joe. That's the only area we have control, really, over, over our expenses, is in general legal services. And I detailed our efforts to reduce those costs. I mean, obviously, we don't have any control over suits. And generally, as you see, those tend to be land case issues, tend to be planning boards, ZDA issues. So, and we honestly, we have no control over those.
I absolutely agree. It's exactly what the information shows, so.
The control that we do have, I think, is, I know for the last couple of years, I've been pretty involved with the planning board in a couple of its decisions here and there. Just sort of making sure, to include, say, issues like the asphalt plant. Just to make sure that, that the planning board was on solid legal footing with its recommendations, without influencing, you know, how the members interpreted, you know, our local bylaws. But just helping inform them about legal precedent and that kind of thing, you know what I mean? So insofar as we can control those costs, we have as well. But clearly, those are, those are the wild card. Because you never know when someone's going to be particularly aggrieved by a particular decision by a town agency, so. Sorry, Joe. Thanks.
No, the majority of the issues out there are planning board-related, which is not atypical, I don't think, in a municipality. So I just wanted to get some input on that before I kind of weighed in. But obviously, the cost is extremely low if you compare us to other towns our size. So we are, whether it's the Town Council that controls that or the town manager, but we're managing it properly. So not that that's what we're here for tonight, but I just wanted to make that comment.
As I mentioned last, I think I mentioned it last time. He did comment to me that he has a very sort of atypical relationship with this town. He's much more hands-on. He's not nearly as involved in things. As I said, even a small town like Blackstone spends $100,000 a year. Another larger town that he represents is Bill Ricka. I mean, he attends, tends to attend most of the town meetings. You know, the town's asking him to attend, and he always asks if we need him there. But we haven't, at least since I've been here, we haven't had any sufficient... I just didn't think there was any need to have him here, although he's always been available by phone if we would have needed something, had some legal questions. So it's not a question of availability. And again, I have nothing at for or against him personally. He's a nice enough guy. And he's, my issues are that he's accessible, and he's reasonable in terms of rate, more than reasonable. So I mean, you know, if there was somebody out there that could do same-quality work for less money, I'd say, "Let's go for that," you know? But he's, he's adapted to the change. The thing I can say about him is, he seems to adapt it quite well to the change in the relationship, to include the finances, because he sure doesn't make a lot, make any money off of, you know, from the representation of Oxbridge, so.
All set. Everybody's all good. Intertain a motion to, did I go through that already? Intertain a motion to approve the Town Council.
To appoint.
To appoint Town Council for another year.
I'll make a motion to appoint Lewis and Costello, Condon and Plaff for Town Council for another year.
All those in favor? Any oppose? I'm sorry. Any oppose? Oppose?
Having nothing, excuse me, having nothing to do with the items mentioned by Mr. Borrell.
So was that a, I didn't understand that, Peter. Sorry.
Yeah, Peter was opposed, and everyone else was in favor. Four to one.
I'm actually opposed as well.
Oh, all right. I'm going to lose my job here. All right. Okay, Joe.
Thank you.
Yep. So three, four, and two against.
Did you have something that you want me to look into moving forward, or?
One of the things I think we should do is, and maybe, you know, one of the things that I'd like to try to do is, how do we measure quality from... And when I, when I say that, I mean, how do we kind of evaluate, what benchmark do we use for his performance? And it doesn't seem like we have a good benchmark. We have cost, which I think he's doing great on cost. But is he really representing the people in the town? And it was really hard for me to get an understanding of that. So I couldn't say, "Yes, I support him," because I don't know. The only experience I've had with him was the asphalt plant, as you mentioned. And for that, he did not represent the citizens of the town. And I say that specifically because he didn't go to the Attorney General, not because he didn't side with my opinion. But, so I think that... But, so I think that's where my, my interest is, is to really, how do we measure that he's truly thinking of the people in the town? And maybe that's a town manager discussion, maybe that's not a town council discussion. But I think that we should look at a town council member that should be able to raise his hand and say, "You're asking me something that I need to be able to go further. Even if you're telling me that I can only take these specific steps, you should be forthright enough to say, 'I also think you should reach out to Attorney General,' for example, when there's, there are cases that really clearly would be unbiased by those decisions." So I think that he just kind of, he made that mistake, and that was the only example that I have witnessed.
I would just refer to the recent issue where he responded to the question of the Chief Executive Office of the Town of Oxbridge, and he referred to the state law, which is correct, but it was incomplete. You see, under the, under state law, there were various forms of government that a town can have, and they're outlined in state law. In addition to that, there is a home rule provision where towns can modify what is stated in the state law through the adoption of a charter. And basically, you can have any variation in government that you want to have, providing it's not abhorrent to the state constitution. So we have great latitude. Now, state law says that absent something else, the selectmen are the chief executive officers of the town, which is, which is true. But it's not really responsive, because you have to look at the entirety. Our pre-existing charter specifically named, mentioned in two places, "The Board of Selectmen are the chief executive officers of the town." The new charter removed it in both places. In addition to that, the charter specifically said that formally, the manager prepared the budget in consultation with the Board of Selectmen. That was changed to, "The manager prepares the budget and merely presents it to the board." At the same, so we have no, no legal basis for making any changes to his budget. In addition to that, the charter says that the Board of Selectmen shall deal with all town department heads and employees only through the manager. Now, it is inconceivable that anyone can call himself, or a organization called themselves Chief Executive Officers, if you have nothing to do with the budget of the enterprise and are not able to converse freely with any town employee or manager. It's just completely inconsistent.
They basically ignore you anyways. They'll listen to you and then they go get a cup of coffee, so.
Well, you know, I don't know about that. I don't, I don't-
I can tell you a few experiences.
Yeah, fine. But the fact that just, he said, "Well, you know, yeah, okay, if nobody else is mentioned, then the Board of Selectmen is." Together with the other things that are in the charter. And there's nothing that requires the Board of Selectmen to be Chief Executive Officer. We could name the janitor the Chief Executive Officer of the town. We could just take some stranger in town and say, "You are the Chief Executive Officer." As long as they're a resident of the town. They wouldn't even have to be a resident. But anyway, and the second thing that I'm adamant on is that nothing should go to town council without the approval of the Board of Selectmen unless it's an emergency, a real emergency. And there are very few of those.
I like to see something in writing from them too, once in a while, but, you know, that doesn't show up either. Of course, that's probably because we're not paying them, right? They're working for a union? Is the union suing the town and he's working for the union?
Union's not suing the town. Union's being sued. Police union.
And we're defending the union. On what? On what grounds?
We have nothing to do with it. We have nothing to do with it.
No, and that's not a conflict.
We're not-
I better watch it and talk myself into achieving both.
If my memory is correct, the, the police chief was mentioned as, as a defendant, as well as the union. And I think the town was also named as a defendant. So, you know, through that, that's how we get involved in it. At least that's my, that's my recollection.
If you think of it, Sean, I like to know how he can defend the union and when we're part of the lawsuit, as part of the town.
The Tara McCrowan lawsuit, no, the town is not named.
The what?
I don't believe.
Okay, well, I may be mistaken.
Yes, the chief was named, the town was named, in this particular.
Yep. Sean?
In the Tara McCrowan lawsuit, Tara McCrowan is suing the town, the police association, and two officers personally. Lewis, and Costello and Plaff is representing the two officers personally because they work for the Town of Oxbridge. The police union has a separate lawyer, and that's, that's the connection. So Freitas is not connected to that, his name is not in that documentation. So that's where Costello comes in. And that's the correct information, because I have the court papers. So Costello, because the two employees work for the Town of Oxbridge, Costello is representing them personally, and then their union lawyer is representing the union. So for every court filing, there's Costello's answer and there's the union answer. So that's the clarification of just what you were explaining. Again, I'm not a party. The two officers are.
Yes, but as the employer of the two officers, we are naturally named.
Correct, right, right. And his, in his reply, where he files his court document, he says, "I represent, quote, 'the Town of Oxbridge.'" It's right on that piece of paper. Town council represents our employees when they're being, when they're charged with, when they're sued for doing something in the, within the scope of their employment.
That's correct.
Yeah, but they were beyond the scope of the employment for what they're being sued.
No, it was on the job. It was all on the job stuff. The chief, I don't know, I don't know anything about it.
Yeah. You, you always sue the employer too, because the employer has the money. The officer doesn't have any money.
We're a passive defendant. We really don't have any.
Well, we're, we're passive in the sense that, you know, the insurance company is representing us. So, and if there's an offer, if there is an offer, offer of settlement by the insurance company, and we look at it and we say, "Gee, we don't agree with that," the insurance company will say, "Listen, we want to settle this for X thousands of dollars. If you don't agree with that, you're free to, you know, pursue the case, but the insurance company will only be liable for the amount that they would have settled for. Anything over that would be on our, our responsibility."
Said, "We're not paying Costello for his representation of the police officers. The town is not paying."
The insurance company's not, Larry, Tom, and Maya, they're not, they don't have anything to do with that, so that is a no. Maya has nothing to do with that.
Let's go on. Let's go on to the new business, class two license. What happened to Rick?
Oh, Rick's back on. The, the other manager had personal issues. He was not able to be the manager of record. So Rick Dowden.
So it's gone back there?
Going to go back to Rick. And that's to make sure we get the bond issued back in his name and so forth.
Have I looked at the minutes for June 20th?
Please take a vote on that.
You want to take a vote just to make Rick the manager on record?
No, it's like, what? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Rick Dowden as manager of the Quaker Auto Sales.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Someone was hired to be president of UMass, and before he even took the job, they got rid of him, but the state paid him a million, remember, a million dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah. What a system, huh?
What a system.
Only in America.
So the minutes for June 20th, any changes, any omissions, errors? If not, I will accept the motion to, accept the minutes as written.
For which date now?
June 20th. Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as written dated June 20th, 2013.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And June 24th is the minutes? If there's no errors or admission, I see all those street names are in. No errors, I'll accept the motion to, accept the minutes as submitted.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of Monday, June 24th, 2013, as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Member issues. On this public awareness plan, there's emails. Do they send out responses when somebody signs on? Who's doing that? Is that-
Like if we post a news and announcements?
Like, yeah, if you wrote in and said, "I want information on the conservation and whatnot," those acknowledged that you signed in?
What, the sign up?
Yeah.
The email sign up? Yeah, you get a confirmation on that.
And then I send it in and what hap, it comes back again?
If you have a specific question, is that true?
I haven't got to the question yet. I just keep getting them back. I'm saying-
Oh, to get the email back for the-
Confirmation?
Yeah, you just get the confirmation back. I don't remember if you had to confirm it or not, but I get all the emails, all the agendas and everything.
Oh, oh.
We can check it out and I can see-
But each one comes individually, like the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, Conservation, they all come separate, except when you sign up.
And if you sign up, what happens?
Then you get, I get-
The agendas.
The agendas. Yeah, you get all that.
Good heavens.
Postings.
Yeah, you get swamped.
You have your choice. It's a choice.
You can get that all online now. You just go on the web, town webpage. You can get all that.
Yeah.
But for someone who doesn't pay attention to it, not saying me, but just people in general.
Oxbridge, Mass. You'll get to the town webpage.
Well, it'll send you the agendas in time, so you could say, "Oh, I see what's going on. I can go to this meeting." It doesn't send you the minutes. It's mostly agendas and public hearing notices, announcements, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
But you can get all that on the web.
Well, yeah, they'll send you emails, yeah.
Oh, okay.
No, you get an email. No, you get an email.
Because they're so lazy.
Exactly.
Let me take, I want to take a survey.
When?
Right now.
Okay.
Yes. When you get up in the morning, you check your computer for emails? You don't?
Yeah.
Okay. Sean?
As part of my job, I do.
Okay, so how many emails do you get?
From like what, midnight to 6:00 AM?
Yeah. New, new things. When you open up your email, how many new things are there?
For, just for work?
No, just in general, that you have to look at.
For being personal.
A dozen.
I get 200 a day, Peter.
Okay, how about you?
A dozen?
Yeah, a dozen.
A dozen, that's all? Tim?
Junk. Great, we lost Joe. Nice.
I get 200. 200 a day.
Okay. And how about you, Tim?
It's better we can't see.
I get about 25.
Jan.
He didn't hear that, did he?
Ton of junk.
Yes, I get tons of stuff. And it takes me a long time just to go through and delete them. And sometimes you mark it to delete and it automatically wipes it out, or you have to go back and do it again.
I was just kidding, Joe.
So I don't understand, you know, maybe there are people out there that only get emails that they want to look at, but I'm not one of them.
This is optional, Peter.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that. But I'm wondering just how many people are there really that wants, because we have to do all that stuff to send them, make this list and do it and so forth. And once you do that, you have an obligation now. We're incurring another obligation.
So, how are we doing on the-
Isn't it just a click of the-
There's no work on our end.
There's no work.
If you sign up, it's-
It's up to the individual to make-
It's all automatic, I think.
You can unsubscribe to it.
There's no work.
You can pick the particular boards that you want. You don't automatically receive from everyone. You can pick and choose. If you're just interested in Board of Health, you wouldn't get any alerts except for Board of Health meetings. Just whatever you choose to be alerted to.
How are we doing with the Lions and Animal Inspector?
Board of Health, I believe, is going to entertain that issue tomorrow at its meeting.
We have a candidate and-
The Board of Health is handling the hiring.
Okay. 3:00 PM.
And just informational on that, there's a, and I know it's in Brockton, but on July 1st, there's a free, I'm sorry, not July 1st, on July 27th, there's an informative discussion around animal control. If you're interested to share with some of the folks in either the Board of Health or the animal control area around animal control.
It's an update on the regulations too regarding the dogs and animals.
Yep.
So, anything else? Anybody want to? Here or none. Meeting's adjourned.
It's reconvened. Did everyone receive that letter from the superintendent?
That's right. The one dated July 1st, Peter, I did receive that requesting that we get two members join a focus group.
Yeah. When I read that letter, I was astonished. A focus group? I mean, reading the letter, it is clear to me that the management of the Oxbridge School System is beyond the ability of the superintendent. Otherwise, he wouldn't be looking to form focus groups. What's a focus group?
It's a budget summit.
It's a public relations process where you try to get people who will support your budgetary recommendations. That's not the problem that we have. The problem that we have is the school budget is out of control, and it doesn't need a focus group.
The school department believes it's a community problem. It's a town problem. The school presents the characterization that it's the school budget and that's the school's problem. It's, so it's, basically, it's a budget summit, is what it sounds to me.
Well, of course, it's a town problem. It's a problem of the taxpayers of the town. If it wasn't a problem for the taxpayers of the town, I wouldn't be concerned about it. But it is a problem for the taxpayers of the town, and it's going to impact the ability of the town as a whole to meet its obligations.
But the school department wants buy-in from the town officials to help solve its problems.
Yes. Yes.
Well, we have them coming in on the 22nd, so I suggest we discuss it with them here on the 22nd.
Now, who is the "them"?
Superintendent, I think Dawn Sawyer.
And Ernie.
Ernie probably won't be here, but.
And what do we hope to accomplish with that?
We were just going to ask them what they're going to do to resolve their problem, their budget issue.
We could ask them by sending them a question.
But we, but now with the letter, we can actually address what do they expect to accomplish by having a budget summit and meeting for one Saturday.
I had recommended a face-to-face, because, because of this problem came to us so late, this, this, just a last town meeting. So I think the board and the town manager's office and perhaps the school department needs to show the town that what steps it, we are taking so that there's not another request for $800,000 or a million, or a million six or whatever, stabilization transfer next year. How are we going to avoid that? And that's what my recommendation was, we need to, they need and we need to help them sort of get out in front of this issue. I mean, and people are, we need to, we can't wait until March.
That's fine, but you don't need a focus group to do that. A focus group is a public relations process. And I have nothing against that. A focus group is a public relations process and I have nothing against that, some of my best friends are public relations, but that doesn't solve the problem. And as far as having a meeting, let me read something to you, and in fact, I'll pass it along. My secretary of years ago gave this to me. And the author is unknown, it says, "Meetings are held because men seek companionship or, at a minimum, wish to escape the tedium of solitary duties. They yearn for the prestige which accrues to he who presides over meetings and this leads them to convoke assemblies over which they can preside. Finally, there is a meeting which is called, not because there is business to be done, but because it is necessary to create the impression that business is being done. Such meetings are more than a substitute for action, they are widely regarded as action." And that's what we're getting into. After this, the next meeting in July, we will have gone through one-sixth of the year. At the end of August, we'd have gone through one-quarter of the year. And we've accomplished nothing, really. We have these things on the agenda, but there seems to be no plan to get them moving, get them going, and I see the same thing that I've seen happen year after year after year after year.
What are you talking about, the member issues?
The whole thing.
There's nothing going on it?
The whole thing, everything.
The signs are, are working on, the, the zoning bylaws-
The whole ballgame, he's talking about the whole, the whole deal.
Yeah.
Peter's talking about the whole deal.
Now, here it is, we almost adjourned the meeting, you know, after forty-five minutes, we wanna go home. We don't have a plan, we don't have a plan of action.
Well, give us a plan.
We don't have a plan of action.
Give us a plan, Peter.
The, that's the job of the chairman, to make sure that there is a general consensus of what we wanna do and how we're going to go about it. I'm not criticizing you because I'm just trying to get across there needs to, well, you know-
You kind of are, Peter.
Well, I don't mean it that way.
No, no, I know, I know you don't.
We've had, we've had new chairman every year for the last how many years? Sometimes it's unavailable, you know, unavoidable, it just happens, but it's not a good way to run an organization.
I, I always jumped out of my seat one to make you the chairman.
Yeah.
Listen, chairman of any board or committee is elected by majority vote.
I understand that, I understand that.
And there was a nomination and there was a second, but there was no three votes, so-
No, I got, I got you.
That's where we are.
Right.
And I'm not looking to change that.
No, no, I, I know you're not.
That's the reality.
I know you're not. I know you're not.
But, I would like to be on the board when we're not a failed board. And we're, we're gonna be a failed board unless we actually do something. And we have to decide what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it, why we're doing it, and that should be the, the main subject matter of the meeting, not the, um, routine, um, you know.
And I think that's why we've been working on getting the information out to the people and encouraging them to show up to vote. And that's part of this, this, uh, group of items that are down here, and that's what we're working on, but we can't put up signs now. We're working on getting communications going through the email.
And that's gonna solve what problem?
Yeah, what's solved? We're doing something, at least we're not sitting there twiddling our thumbs.
Well, um, maybe I'm missing something, I don't know, it's certainly possible. In fact, probably-
I don't feel that this board is sitting around doing nothing, I feel that the board is, is willing to take on anything that comes up that makes sense and will be in the best interest of the town.
All right.
How about you, Joe?
I, I started working on a zoning bylaw quick sheet that I thought we could use in one of our, either the next or follow-up meetings. To, I know that I took your feedback, Peter, from the last discussion on zoning and, um, wanted to take some time to bring the fundamentals to the group for discussion, uh, before we deep dove into the actual details of the zoning laws. So that's what I've done from a zoning perspective. How about what's not on the agenda? What else do we wanna add to it? Should we scale back, you know, next week's agenda and only talk about zoning next meeting and the one after, just school board? Uh, with the invitation of some folks from the school board. Uh, I mean, I think, I think we do need to participate in, even though you're, you're saying it's more of a marketing, uh, campaign, but uh, the focus groups, I mean, it's, it's getting us engaged and starting to build rapport, I mean, I don't know any other way to make change other than starting to talk to people.
I agree, Joe, dialogue should be open. It can't hurt.
Jen, you've been out there, as Jen is, from, from the emails that I've read, you've been out there trying to work with the, with the school?
Well, I haven't done, really done anything, I mean, other than inviting them, they're coming on the twenty-second.
All right, but that's a start, I mean, get, inviting them is, is one thing and getting over here to face-to-face so that we can talk to them. That's what we wanna do. I mean, I don't, I wish there was a magic wand, I, I just don't have one.
If I call a meeting for something, I know in advance what the outcome I want. Not that I'll get it, but I know what it is-
But you're only one vote?
No, no, I know that.
Okay.
But I, I know what it is that I'm looking for and that's why I'm having a meeting. Either I need to receive some information or I'm gonna present some information to somebody, but it's always, I know what the end result that I'm looking for before I have some meeting, just to have people come in and have a discussion and we pat each other on the back and say, everything is wonderful, or we say, oh gee, it's terrible, I don't know what we're gonna do, and then go home, um, I don't know that that accomplishes anything.
It never has.
Is it, does anyone suppose that since the superintendent said they really have to have, they should, they wanted a million and a half dollars and settled for half, that next year is, is going to be, they're gonna settle for the half again? I mean, what, what, what are you looking for? See, that's what I don't understand. Everybody in an organization can use more money. Every general, every sergeant, every business manager, they can always want more, okay, yes.
They're within our means.
That's correct.
Except-
Yes. And the issue is that it, in, in, no matter what the organization is, public, private, charitable, it doesn't make any difference. Even in sports, I don't know much about sports, but I know you'll have a football team that's losing and losing and losing, they can't get any home runs or whatever they get. And then they'll hire a new manager or a new coach and all of a sudden, they start winning, you see? There are always people who just can't do the job that they're involved in. It doesn't mean the job can't be done, it just means that that particular person isn't able to do it. But in government, it seems as though we, we never can say, gee, I'm sorry, I like you, but you just can't do the job, goodbye. We wait till they die of old age or something.
Give them another thirty thousand dollars a year?
Yeah, yeah.
The municipality certainly hasn't done that.
What?
The municipality certainly hasn't done that.
You're right, municipality has not done that.
But anyway, that's my two cents.
Yeah, just for the record, Peter, it's touchdowns and field goals and same.
I'm, I'm sorry, that's-
That's it, you're right.
All right, and then just, Tim, one other thing, you all received a calendar of the timeline for the warrant process. Look it over, if you have any comments, would you like to add anything, just let us know at the office.
I was gonna be in touch with Howard this week, did?
Excellent.
All right, let's see, get that going and hopefully have that completed by the next meeting, which it looks like you get it quite a bit.
But that timeline, it's not gonna solve the problem.
No, it's not, right, but this-
The, the problem is the wording in the charter, 'cause it talks about petitions being received and inclusion on the warrant, which is very confusing, because there are two kinds of petitions. There is a generic petition, the right of everyone to petition the government for a redress of grievances or for any other thing, that's a petition. There are also specific kinds of petitions under state law to get articles on the warrants. The wording in the, the charter does not differentiate between the two, they use the word petition. The Board of Selectmen shall receive petitions, and then it says, we shall include on the warrant, blah, blah, blah. If they had just made reference to the state law, we wouldn't have any of these problems. It's the charter that has created the problem and that problem persists.
So what, what do we do, Peter? Do we attend, I mean, is, is there still charter review sessions we should try to be involved with? What do we do to try to fix it?
In, in my view, we should revise the charter, we had another committee to, to suggest revisions to the charter to fix it. Because that's the only way to change it.
Is this, is this committee that we have now cast in stone, or can we appoint?
No, no, they're gone, once, once they issue the final report, they're dissolved.
Oh, all right.
It's up to the Board of Selectmen to appoint another committee. And, uh, since the previous committee was appointed through the process outlined in the charter, which is once every ten years, okay? We can appoint a new committee whenever we want, doesn't have to follow the ten-year cycle, it says, the charter says, once every ten years, we must. That doesn't mean that we can't do it outside of the ten years. I think it's a mistake to have a committee where we have, uh, you know, the moderator is one member or the finance committee man, uh, appoints two people, none of which can be members of the committee, why? What, does that make sense? Tell me why, give me a reason. Because what do they do? They appoint a former member of the committee. But why would you not want people in the finance committee to be involved in making revisions to the charter because it involves the finance committee? Why wouldn't you not have selectmen involved in it because it has reference to the selectmen? Why would you not have the manager as part of the committee because he has to work with the, with the thing, you see?
I see, but I don't agree, but it's all right. I just-
Were you invited to help, to give input to the last charter review committee?
I went to many, I went to several of their meetings, I, I made many recommendations, many of which were adopted. But the, the, the changes that are gracious, um, I brought it to their attention, but they made those changes at the last minute and they weren't taking any comments at that final meeting.
You can only say it once.
Only say it once.
Well, then it sounds like a task for you to work on, to see if we should have another committee.
Well, only the Board of Selectmen can, well, actually, it can be others too, but the Board of Selectmen normally appoint a committee.
Is there a minimum?
That's a good idea.
Minimum amount of folks at the committee?
No, no, you're free to, um-
Only the first revision committee was provided for was, um-
That was in the charter.
In the original charter.
Yes.
Once, now, those provisions in that final article, whatever it was, Article eight or Article nine-
Yeah.
Are gone now, so now it's, the only provision left for revision is that it must take place every ten years, that's it.
Yeah.
So, that revision or any previous or any intermediate revisions-
When we changed the, uh, method of selecting the Board of Health from appointed to, uh, elected, that didn't go through a committee. There was the article on the town meeting warrant to make that change and then it was on the ballot at the next election, you see?
So, just, so what I'm hearing you correctly, Peter, is you're recommending that we add a discussion topic to our, our forum to discuss, um, appointment of a new committee and then discussion around how to direct that committee to review the charter.
Yeah, in fact, it would, it, the committee could be the Board of Selectmen, doesn't have to be, uh, set people, we're free to do whatever we want.
Okay.
But that's, that's only my, my thought.
Obviously, you endanger-
Yeah.
Broad acceptance.
Say it again?
You endanger the possibility of broad accept, broad acceptance from the town by keeping it a narrow group, like, I'm not saying you could, but-
Not, not necessarily, uh, because it doesn't mean you, you're not going to, you know, have other people who are involved with working in the charter, with the charter, to say, listen, these are the changes we'd like to see, you know?
And have their input.
It doesn't exclude any of that.
Fine, just exclusively this group.
Not, I'm not, I'm not saying that's what my recommendation is, I'm saying that the method of selection under the charter never made it much sense to me. And if you look at the, I kept a record of the, the, the meetings. Of the first eighteen meetings, four members missed ten of the first eighteen meetings. So what does that tell you? And there were several others who missed, um, eight, some missed six and so forth. And we had the same thing with the original charter commission, 'cause when we adopted the charter, it's a commission, not a committee, and they're elected. And everyone who was on the commission asked for the job and they were voted into the job. And we had one member of the committee who I think came to the first meeting and the last meeting, that was it, we never saw him in between. We had to cancel many meetings because we didn't have a quorum. So, that's what you have. So when I say, uh, there's nothing wrong with having the Board of Selectmen do it because we have a better chance of having selectmen come and discuss that issue. The absenteeism will be much less. The, one of the appointees from the Board of Selectmen, uh, never even, uh, was sworn in. He wanted the job, the board appointed him, I think I made the nomination, if I remember right, and we appointed him. Come to find out, he never was sworn in and didn't tell anybody, he didn't want the job. So, you know, meeting after meeting, he was absent and then finally, um, we declared that he, uh, and, and at that time, I went to Harry and I said, Harry, do you want us to reappoint someone? And he said, well, we've already done a lot of the work, it, you know, don't bother, so we didn't, we didn't bother reappointing someone. But that happens all too often.
So we'll go put that on the agenda for next, next meeting.
It's up to you.
And we can expect to be here for a while, because this isn't gonna be a short topic by any means, once we get going into it.
Well, you know.
So get your vacations out of the way.
Vacation, I had one, I had one when I was in the army, you get a thirty-day vacation.
Ah, here we go, ah, here we go.
That was during the War of eighteen twelve.
How about you, Joe, you got anything to say, speak up?
No, I don't have anything else to add.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You agree with that, uh, charter review, uh, discussion?
I think that the, the objective for our agenda item should be that we, we decide if we're going to appoint a, a new committee and I think we should talk about if we do, what direction are we gonna give that committee? I don't wanna give them, I don't think we should say a blanket, just review the charter, I think we should point out some specific things that we'd like them to look at.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Sure.
Jen? Peter, I, I know you're all set. Wait, you're Lance.
Yeah, I'm Lance, I'm all set.
You anything to say, Sean?
No, sir, all set.
Tracy?
All set.
Mike? Barry? That being said, can I adjourn now before? This meeting is adjourned.